That constitutes the forum. So we will call the meeting to order. And let's stand for a further reading.
And just put a flag up, huh?
Yeah, please. Okay. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there a motion for approval on the agenda? I approve the motion. You decide. Can you make a motion too? I make the motion to approve the agenda. Okay. Um, Ms. Gordon, do you second?
I second.
Okay, it's been all in, um, favor? Aye, aye, aye. All nays? Passed unanimously. Um. Ms. Gordon going to agree the part about the, um, the Republican section and what have you. But let me start by saying this is a meeting of the Beaufort County Board of Education Legislative Committee, April the 11th, 2025. We're meeting at the D B S C Conference Room Eight, Remote Hyper Conference and conferencing meetings. We broadcast on the county channel for street due legislative committee public comments. Please sign up using the public comment form. You can find the Board of Education public comment form on our website at H T T P S.
Recording in progress.
colon, forward slash triple W, beaufortschools.net forward slash about hyphen us forward slash board hyphen uh hyphen ed forward slash public hyphen comments. You will receive a call during the public comments where you'll be able to speak and address the committee for a maximum of three minutes on issues within the committee's domain. The forum being limited to fifteen minutes. Citizens desiring to participate in person must fill out a public comment card that can be obtained from the board clerk upon arrival. Uh, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, moving right along, is there a motion for approval of the committee meeting minutes from February 12th and February 26th? I make the motion that the meeting was approved. Meeting minutes are agreed, okay. Is there a second? Ms. Gordon?
I second, Gordon, second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor say aye or no? Aye.
Aye.
All ayes, passed unanimously. The next item is a legislative committee position statement. And on that, I just want to reiterate that what we are attempting to do with this version of the, uh, legislative committee is to be proactive, to actually search for things or efforts or proposed amendments or actions that can affect public schools in our district in particular. We want upon search, rediscover those. We want to do sort of an analysis and want to bring them back for discussion and decision to the legislative committee so that we can vote to forward it to the board or take action otherwise. We appreciate all the efforts that everyone is doing. We know that there's a lot of information that we're sharing. Um, we're looking at basically starting from a fairly, um, early starting point for this version of the committee. And we want to ensure that all of us are collectively seeking information and sharing that with the committee. Uh, that's very vital. With our goal is to not be surprised by bills that are before the General Assembly, political or non-political business charitable efforts that can affect the school district and our ability to educate students. So please, um, think that at heart. Uh, one of the things I'd like to do now is to sort of just discuss some of the potential areas we pursue and form and engage by committee members. As a prelude to that, uh, for those that are on now, I'd like for you to note that we had, we did the pre-file bills collectively. You've reviewed them, they've been highlighted. Those have proved very effective. If you will, um, as you all are doing, I'm sure, maintain them. And Ms. Cushing, can we get booklets for the five members of the, um, pre-file bills? There's one for House and one for Senate. You've already done it for us. I can just put old in mine and give a binder so we can take that around a little bit easier to read. You have any comments on that Pastor Gordon or even Ms. Um, Ms. Gordon?
No, I'm good.
And, and so, and so what I found is just having that and being able to read through it is a lot easier for me because I'm not a techie and I like paper. So I can just flip through a particular page and show it to someone.
Got you, that's easy.
And that's easy. And so that's, that's what we're trying to do. And thanks to all the efforts everyone else has put together until now on that. The other item I wanted to make note of is that the 2025 South Carolina School Board Legislative Resolutions. And this is a document that's very current. And that's included in your package today. And I would just like to give those members that are on board, uh, to just take, you know, three to four minutes to read through it and scan it and see are there any questions that you have about how best to utilize this? Again, I like paper, so I want a binder. I'll put this in the binder that Ms. Cushing here will create for. And just as you see, I keep all my information about that. Not everybody needs, young people definitely don't need, but it's a question that is important to me. So I'll give you five minutes, three, five, four minutes of quiet time. And you can look through and see if there's anything that is particularly notice.
Tony, are you able to get into the community at all?
No, not.
Okay.
And Ms. Gordon, um, uh, we, we will be happy to, to deliver that binder to you wherever is convenient for you, ma'am.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, yes. So on the Skizma Legislative Resolution, a couple of things I, I want to point out that really affect us. On page two, you'll notice broadband expansion. South Carolina School Board Association supports that. The state of South Carolina has received millions of dollars to execute on a expanding broadband. So that is something that, you know, just as an idea, that, um, we believe should, we should support at some point. At the benefit of this document, it is that we're going to have a session where you're going to be asked to rank your priorities. We sent out solicitations for feedback, uh, so you could bring them into Robin. But I'm saying everybody has a busy schedule, so we're going to do it in real time. So we're trying to make sure today we highlight types of documents that you may want to take a look at. You have the pre-file bills, you have the South Carolina School Board, you have, we're going to talk about the next one in a few minutes, the 2024 legislative items. So you have items that you can pull from. And so this whole one on broadband is very instrumental and very critically important. The other one is there are about seven to 10 pre-file bills for changing the United States Constitution. I'm sorry, yeah, the United States Constitution. That can be done via a, a convention of the states. A convention of the states, if it is voted on, can actually overturn the constitution. And you can leave with an entirely new constitution and things such as Bill of Rights become not a factor. It depends on what those states come together. And so it's a very, very important point that we are aware of who is proposing this. The critical thing that is so concerning about Convention of the States is once it starts, there are no guardrails on what can be discussed. Now think about it.
So it has to be voted on by a majority of the states. They could, they could say anything they want to in that convention states. Uh, it still goes to the states and three quarters of the.
Three quarters.
Have to say yea verily. It's a type three.
Yeah. Well, it's gaining energy so that people are proposing it and most of those bills rely on it. Because others know as well that even though it can be called, passing it just like, um, uh, example is E R A amendment.
It still hasn't been passed.
Still hasn't passed, like one or two states short. But also that means that if one or two states sort of lean that way, all of a sudden you got an issue. So I'm not against or for the E R A amendment, just use that as an example. So you, as you look through this particular document, and today it has to help everybody understand there are two that they can come up with their top ten. All right, the next ones we want to also share and discuss are the 2024 School Board Legislative Orders. You have that document in your package as well. And again, we're just trying to help so that everyone can feel like, okay, I don't have to start from scratch and read all the pre-file bills. This is just to help. So you'll see that there are some things here that may have been adjudicated or ruled on and took dead by now. But we also ask that you look through here and see are there any that actually, um, you would like to have continuing as a priority, prioritized item. And let me stop there, Ms. Gordon, and, um, Pastor Gordon, and see if you have any comments or questions so far.
No, not so far.
Good. Does this help in terms of? Oh, this is definitely House. Okay. And she has a right. Ms. Gordon?
Yes, it does help. Um, and I can't wait to see the, uh, the binders I can go through it, so thank you.
It helps. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, the next one I want to talk about is the School Board Association. Remember, we no longer have lobbyists, so that falls upon primarily to me, this committee, to, to be active and proactive and moving forward drastically. Uh, and so what I've done over the last, since the last meeting is try to be a lot more, uh, aware of the documentation we get from the South Carolina School Board. And one of those is the legislative update, which is also. is the legislative update, which is also in your package. Now, they also sent out one that deals with a lot of media coverage. That's important. That's nice. But if I had to prioritize the three documents that are sent out, this is the one that tells the three bills are doing what. And again, in terms of understanding out of the sixteen hundred and fifteen that were pre-filed, how many of the almost three hundred actions or proposals have actually gone forward? This one also talks about provisos. And I didn't know until I moved to South Carolina that proviso is a unique document, not in every state. Unique action, legislative action, that you can pass a bill and then someone can attach a proviso to it. So and that proviso is binding. And so in this particular document, if you look on the second page, the top bullet, proviso one dot eight two, you see the amendment, just as an example, again, I'm neither for nor against at this point. Amendment to prohibit any person employed or paid through by an education management company or charter management organization from serving on a charterable charter school board. So those are the types of prohibitions that can come into the law and the general public will never hear about. And then you go and you try to do something and then you find out, oh, that prohibited it. So collectively, the district has an opportunity to implement that. So that would be the one that I certainly in your, I know you got a lot of challenges and time constraints as we all do. But that will be the one that I'll suggest is the third in in that first trilogy. So uh, there's two others that have mentioned. One is is about more media. And then one is a weekly update, but the legislative part is the one that um is very important. And the legislature legislature concludes, I believe, this next Friday. So, you know, we we don't have much time, but I think Pastor Gordon is going to speak about how the response that our delegation was at that particular point in time. So let me stop there and ask any questions, comments, guidance?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Gordon?
And?
Colonel Guyer? Okay. Ready for the next one? And this is where the members get to uh, I shut up and members get to speak and talk and and share. So the next one is about potential areas to pursue. And let me read who has identified what so far. Uh, Colonel Guyer has identified Battery Pole House, help of Beaufort Exchange Club, multiple city councils. Count multiple uh, county councils, he's also um pursuing the Saloco. Uh, Friends of Hunting Island, Beaufort County Bar Association, Jail and Township, Beaufort Community Partnerships, School Improvement Council. So just saying a school improvement council, that captures a lot of different groups. So this is a numerical total. This is a sort of a general labeling. So please feel free to do that. Pastor Gordon, I know you can speak on a community pastor's council.
Yeah, um, definitely. A a Shell Township and Colonel Guyer did that uh, organization. It was a Shell Township and it consisted of about fifteen or more churches that had come together once a month under leadership of pastors. And they have been really consistent during the years when it came, come to information about things going on in the community, school, district. Um, and at the end of this month, we we do have an audience with them at the end of this month. And when we went to second meeting yesterday, um, they mentioned that that was a very powerful tool to to get information out about what's going on in in our state and different programs. So yeah, that's a very powerful tool right there.
And Ms. Gordon also uh, mentioned uh, Ms. Gordon, you want to talk about the ones you mentioned? Or I can read them and then you can discuss them if you like, ma'am.
I believe one is on here is the uh, the Beaufort Illuminati, I mean, the Beaufort Sea Island uh, church organization. Is that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, that consists of about uh, ten to fifteen women uh, in all areas of Beaufort County. And the main focus is, you know, children. And he thought what's going on uh, in education and and giving to, I believe, St. Hellematt Island Elementary is our school of choice this this particular year. But we also uh, you know, go out and and, you know, in the community as well. Um, I don't know the other one that I listed.
Divine name?
Oh, well, you know, the divine that uh, the Greek organizations, the black Greek organizations of uh, AKA's Altus, uh, Omegas, uh, et cetera. And uh, there are over maybe two hundred uh, or so uh, of these men and women in Beaufort County. So that's a great group to reach out to and to uh, find out what's going on and what they're doing and and uh, and share some of the information that we have. In fact, uh, I need to get some of those booklets that we are passing out uh, to each one of them. And just to let them know uh, that they can call me or can come or whatever. And we can sit down and and have some meetings about what is going on in Beaufort County with our children, with our schools, and uh, if there's anything that that we can do to make a positive impact.
Okay, uh, you mentioned friendships with your legacy in this area. That's pretty extensive. And you're a building and a public school system.
Absolutely. Um, you know, we all have friends, um, and uh, so as we reach out to our friends and and we're sharing what we're doing uh, in this community, what we plan, what we focus to see um uh, in the growth and building relationships so that uh, they can talk in front of you because, you know, some people do not want to talk in front of us. And then there's those who will. So encouraging them to speak out and say things that I can hear and I can relate those things to the board as well.
Okay. Um, Colonel Guyer, I know that yours, but would you like to speak to some of yours? Because you're the one that really spearheaded this effort.
Uh, I would like to mention about the Green Space Advisory Committee. Uh, and if Ms. Gordon, this is a, this is very important to you. Um, I attended the Green Space Advisory Committee uh, this morning at the Public Works Conference Room on Shankland Road. Uh, Chair Michael Machene, uh, Councilman Lawrence McAladdin, uh, Senator Tom Davis, Laura Robins, she's from uh, Buffton, Demeran Manning, Timothy Evans, Peter Christian. Uh, the Deputy County Administrator was there. Alice Howard was there. Uh, the Chair of the County Council. And uh, Carol Cutfield from the Operations Department was there. And the reason we were there, uh, Ms. Gordon, is to discuss the property that's on uh, Sea Island Parkway right by Cougar Drive going out to Ladies Island Middle School. It's it's on the west side of Cougar Drive. It's a six acre plot of forest. It's it's undeveloped. It's for sale for two point two million dollars. And I've been approached by County Council if we would be interested in having that uh, adjacent to the property of Ladies Island um, Middle School. And we talked about this in Operations Committee. And we said that yeah, it's a good idea. Uh, what did you want to use it for? And David Bartholomew, who is York County Councilman, uh, Chloe, said, well, it could be it's a, it would be as a park. And we could see that it's a place that could hold a farmer's market. Uh, something that could be used for uh, oh, gatherings, informal gatherings amongst the trees there. Uh, it's not a night, there's no plan to cut that out of the trees and plant grass on it. But he did say maybe it might be a place for outdoor concerts. And I thought to the uh, Operations Committee, the Operations Committee said, well, we don't want, first of all, we don't want Cougar Road closed. The county engineer would like to have Cougar Road closed. And they want to put a stoplight in the road just to the west of Cougar Road. And that would be the one way you would get into uh, the middle school. Uh, the committee, the Operations Committee said, no, we want to keep Cougar Road open. But make it a right turn only road. In other words, if you're coming from the Sea Islands, you could make a right turn into Cougar Road. And if you're leaving uh, the element or the middle school, you could make a right turn exiting. But you couldn't make a left turn there, either leaving the school or entering the school. And you know, the county engineer was kind of, I don't know if the Department of Transportation or State has to approve this. But if if we are restricting that type of access, um, that's something that we can possibly do. And the reason Chloe that I said that is because for four years I sat in line to go pick up my grandsons on that road. And if I didn't get there by two o'clock to get in line, if I came there about ten minutes before school got out, I would be sitting in Sea Island Parkway waiting to make the left turn. So that's why I said, and uh, Paul Smith was there and he spoke to that as well, that that shouldn't be allowed. So I mentioned that and then I was asked, well, would the I, first of all, they said, I said, I'm not, and we're not interested in buying it. Uh, I said, we we have a a reference passed, we had four hundred and forty-four million dollars, but every dime of that is committed. And we don't have an extra two million dollars. They said, oh, no, no, we're not asking the school district to buy it. Where we want the county to say they'll take it over. And the county would like to have the school district take title of it. And I, and he said, what would the school board think about it? I said, well, I gotta go back to the school board to think about it. But I told the county, if the county is going to use it, that's fine. But if the county is going to use it, the county is going to pay to use it. And they said, okay, that's fine. The county represents, okay, that's fine. We just don't want to own it. So I said, well, I'm gonna bring it up. They said, they want it relatively quickly because they're trying to finalize the deal with a guy who's trying to sell the property. And Green Space actually is what's going to pay for the property. So Chloe, I've added it to the agenda for our uh, work session. It actually was on the agenda anyway. It was called Ladies Island Middle School Development. So it's part of the agenda anyway. But I'm gonna look for a vote during that uh, meeting to say whether or not we are willing to take the deed for that six acre plot. And so what do you think, Chloe?
Well, I have two questions. If we take the deed, does that mean that Beaufort County School District owns that property? And number two, that we have to take control of, you know, maintaining and those types of things?
Yes, we would own it. And but it would be just like other things that we use with the county. For example, uh, during the construction of uh, Robert Small's Middle School, we used uh, the fields at Burton Wells, the athletic fields. And during that time, we paid them a fee because they were maintaining it. And so the same thing would happen if, and same thing happens in our properties. We let people come in and use them, but they pay. They pay a fee. And so it would not cost us any money to have this additional six acres of land. And they said, well, what about insurance? And I say, well, we don't, when we have people come in and pay a fee, they also have to have proof of insurance. So they are liable for anything that might happen on that property. So what do you think?
Well, it 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 sounds feasible. I just have to let it paralyze you. So, yeah.
Right. But see, the reason this is that this is immediate is because the guy that owns it was there. And he said, I've been turning down offers for people that want to put a uh, storage facility there. One of these rental storage facility. Another guy wants to put a gas station there. If if we don't get it, if the if the Green Space doesn't buy it, who knows what's going to go in there? And it would seem to me that we don't want anything there other than the woods that are there already. And so that's 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 why it's kind of immediate that we get, talk about it as a full board, have a motion whether to accept it as a full board. So I, you know, I'm not asking for your uh, you know, vote right now, but I'm glad, I wanted to let you know so you can think about it before the meeting that uh, we have at the end of the month.
Well, I I agree that uh, we should uh, think about this and uh, and take it to the full board. So maybe by then we'll have, you know, more information uh, and be able to answer some of their questions.
Sure.
Uh, I'm I'm with you on that.
Okay. Okay, excellent, excellent. So I'll leave it to be last in terms of connections and relationships. Um, and so I I'll run through some of the ones. But uh, there are three rotarian clubs that we speak to on a regular basis. The next one is coming up in May. So just sharing, when when I did it over a period of time, so I did like a quarter of this and I came back and did about twenty percent. Then the rest of the last time. And by giving myself time to really think about all the different groups I'm involved in, I'll be able to get a lot more. First time I did, it didn't come to mind. So I'm just sharing that that may be one way to uh, also enlarge the group that you have. Even though everybody has a large group already. Uh, there are various clubs I belong to, uh, such as the Jabba Thirsty Coffee Club. Um, the Historic Mitchellville Freedom Park is one. The uh, past presidents of uh, of communities, uh, which is another. Um, religious leaders, uh, including um, uh, mosques and um, synagogues as well as churches. Uh, because we have a lot of things where we are actually working together to get people to interact uh, in a positive manner regardless of where where and how they worship. So uh, local investor groups, uh, NIPU, which is a, and a community organization. Um, and we have those everywhere as I'm learning more about their various areas. It's really phenomenal how many groups and and we want to inform them as well. So that community report is also a very good one. Uh, Beaufort, uh, Hills and Gait Chamber of Commerce, the uh, Realtors Association of Buff, uh, Beaufort and Jasper County, the Hispanic Business Association. Because that's a very tightly wound group in terms of how they reach out. So when I started thinking like that, it became a lot of different groups that, you know, I have elbows with. And just sharing that with you, um, a lot of you have access to groups, um, where you have a platform. One of the platforms we have is WHHITV, um, Military Enhancement Committee, uh, that's working to protect the bases here. Um, so that just gives you an idea of how you can actually, who we actually start saying, how can we make a difference? And inform people. So if you will, uh, let's, at our next legislative meeting, if you can come in and if you can come in and just review your list, firm a oath and say, okay, I've had a chance to think about it. You've seen tools that can work and, and help. Is that fair? Cause Gordon, is that reasonable for you, ma'am?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Colonel, that works. All right, now, the other thing that we're going to do is we want you to not, in addition to identifying groups that you're gonna reach out to and build connections or improve your connections, we also wanna talk about prioritization. So you mentioned that a little bit earlier, where you look at the documents, look at the bills. And let me give you some that are active. Um, one of them is electronic devices must be provided to inmates. And people say, well, why is that important? Because a lot of criminal enterprises are being operated out of prisons. I know in North Carolina, the prison there, they were using drones to drop in cell phones so the prisoners, uh, inmates, I should say, inmates could actually manage their business from inside the prison. And that flows into our kids and our students and our culture. So that's, that's how I, I sort of put that one up there. Um, yeah, one that affects us potentially is House thirty-one ninety-two. Which that's the one that says, we want school board members to be eligible for state health and dental care. So there's a more energy behind that evident from what people have done around for a while on that than before. Another one that I found very interesting is House thirty-one ninety-six. That one would sell basically to take away a requirement for teachers to be certified. So when they get, when they get certified for once, they're certified for life unless something comes up to say they, you lose your testament again. And that might be one of the ways that we improve, you know, teachers don't feel like, oh, I got so many balls hanging over my head, right? So that's, that's one of the ways, um, of, of, of reviewing all this information that we're getting. Another one that's of interest is House thirty-one ninety-nine. That one basically takes away the authority, uh, of the high school, top of the high school league. Which they're the ones that actually control the athletic program, scheduling, classification, no title. So, and I'm not proposing for or against them just saying, this is how you sort of learn what's in the queue. And we don't wanna be surprised by these things. Um, one that is, uh, thirty-two oh nine in the house is one that I think that impair our ability to keep teachers, but it say that one is one that proposes that teachers, not, no, I'm just gonna help the teacher a little bit, actually, I'm ready to go on. Teachers, um, they must agree to actual curriculum assignment. So you will be able to assign, you're gonna be an after-school person or whatever, you'll teach. The teacher would have to say that. So that's the time thing you wanna make sure we're looking at, you take a position either for or against after review. Uh, one that was kind of interesting to me is House thirty-two forty-two. Which say that in twenty twenty-seven, two districts, the state, um, two districts no longer be able to own of these buses. The state will have to. So that is something.
So are activity buses that have to be offered to the state?
Yeah. Uh, so those are the title things that again, normally they don't hit us, but we're just trying to say, you know, this is some, and, and engage our organization and district and others to say, we have a position on this. It comes from one particular house representative. And so we don't know what the motivation is, but that's, that's the time to think. So we're just trying, trying to share all this information and all this activity that's going out, we are, again, don't want to be surprised. That's something that's not good for the district. So that takes care of that. Any questions or comments, feedback?
No, I'm good.
Cause Gordon, you okay?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, the next one is let's talk about the ranking process. So we're asking you to bring in your um, rankings, and if you can, we'd like to request it by next Friday. And you can just send that in to Miss Cushy Berry and then just say, as we hear for the strategy, for those participating in the strategy. Everybody send in their strategy and then, uh, we engage the superintendent over the board session, work session. So we can then go use the mentee, um, I'll give each sign on our phone. And then we were able to individually, two things happened there. One, a person, that, the idea that that person may not feel very confident about gets entered into the conversation. So it's not the most vocal person, right? And then, once everything is up there, we all are voting digitally. So it's not roundtable, back and forth, why you should, why you shouldn't. It's just a very efficient way. So that's, yes.
So the priorities is just coming from the legislature, from the submitting, or are we, you know, sending something out and asking all board members?
That's a good question. I, I would, what do you two say, you three think? I think voters are gonna have to vote on it, but they vote, you solicited the strategy, everybody, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your, the budget strategy went out to everyone, um, and they worked the submitting. So we're asking the whole board to do this, or the documents that I'm sending is so that they can, I send them all three. Cause they will need, they're not privy to this conversation unless they go back and look at the video to know what is their priorities and so forth.
I don't, I don't.
Well, um, I need to remind you that Friday is Christmas Friday.
Yes. So we can say Monday.
Okay, I was just saying, cause school will be closed.
Right.
I mean, the, the district will be closed. Uh, and secondly, uh, I do think they need a little bit more time to to go through the, uh, legislation, legislation and prioritize.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, especially you have to, you know, do this the right way. They need, they need, uh, ample time to, to defend that as well.
Well, the twenty, well, the twenty-seven, was that almost the eighteenth?
The work session is on the twenty-fifth.
Available?
Yes. Yeah, the work session is Friday, the twenty-fifth. So I would need to send stuff out, um, we need directions and stuff, send things out today.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the eleventh. Next week is spring break and I just said that Friday is eighteen instead of Friday. So you, they would need to get it in like a Monday, the twenty-first. To have it for Friday, the twenty-fifth, or, I mean, I don't.
What do you thought?
Yeah.
That's not, it should be the twenty-first.
Is there a little time for you, Robert?
Right, I mean, I'm, you already have, you just have, people just have to email to send it in.
Well, there will be four, there will be, uh, six people that are down ahead.
Right.
Okay. If, if you could send it out with just bullets, not one, two, three, four, just bullets, and say, for example, non-partisan election school board owners, bullet. And realignment of athletics-based schools, bullet. If, if you try to have a whole lot, people are gonna, uh, but they, but that's enough, those titles are enough to say, yeah, I'm kinda interested in that, or I'm not. I don't know what that is, I might, I might find out more. But I know non-partisan election school board, that's a big one. I don't need any more explanation. You know, I'd put a higher priority. That would be one of my top pri- one of my top priorities.
Well, what, what?
But, but I worry about is if we send with paragraphs with each one, you know?
Yeah.
Would they go through it all? Or if you could just give them a title, so, and then they, they themselves could put, they might put numbers on it and you could say this in verbiage. If you have priorities, you can start with one through whatever, but if you have question marks, put a question mark on it. And so when it comes up in discussion, yeah, I need to know more about that. And, and you might put a question mark at every one.
Yeah.
But that's okay, at least you have been introduced to that topic.
And then, or would, would collectively, would we be comfortable having maybe two or three lines and put something in? That's not covered, when you don't capture. Because the intent would be, we will share these with them.
Yeah.
Which, which are the ones that are in our package today. So they have an idea of what's already on the table and then at a certain point. Then you have three lines and you say, so they don't have to get the pool. At three lines, four lines, that they can write in, go to their points, but. Does that, does that sound okay?
Sure.
You okay with that? And that way, we can all add in those, those are the ones that, um, when we get to the day of the cap, I'll raise the ones that I took up there, right, as well. Does that make sense?
Yes, but the pre-file bill, so we're not, they're not gonna be using the pre-file bills that were sent in the house.
I don't have a problem with using, this is my perspective. I don't have a problem with using the pre-file, so there'll be some people that will read it. But I think.
It's better if you still use the documents that are here.
You go under here, and then that was the beginning of it. That's how we usually want to get it back. All right, so these three documents and we can send the pre-file, but say, this is just future research.
Okay.
Although not all over active, that's, there are two of them.
So instead of sending the pre-file, I'll just send those three, so that people won't get confused.
That works.
Because if I send this pre-file, so I send all of that.
And they say, oh my god.
Say, shoot, shoot that chair, that chair of the legislative committee.
So I'll just send those, I'll just send the pre-document, so.
Okay, good, everybody good?
Good.
All right, then the, uh, moving right ahead, um, we go over the legislative uh, priorities for Skizba, so I don't, but I won't do those again unless I hear opposition to moving past them. Uh, would like to now have our dear friend Pastor Gordon speak on, um, the day of the cap.
Okay. Um, the day of the cap was, it's pretty amazing, I've never mentioned anything like that before. But one of the things that, um, Skizba, I would say, did drive home is the fact that, um, there were chief advocates for our district and, um, in education, not just our district, but through the whole state. And it does fall on our shoulders, um, to make sure that we at least have working relationships with our leadership. So when stuff like this come up, when buildings are come up, that they know that they need to make sure that they contact us. You know, but being in it is how you win it, basically. But, um, if I could say, it was like one or two bills that just really caught my attention real hard. And, um, Bill S sixty-two, um, public funding for private institutions. And if I understand what they were saying, um, yesterday with that Supreme Court ruled that the bill is unconstitutional. That it violated and prohibited public funding to private and religious institutions. But the Senate had to revise a version based on a reason why it was unconstitutional. Because under the current contract, um, program that play, how we get our kids, come from a general operating fund. So I would say, that's, that's money, right? Okay, but the Senate created a K twelve educational lottery scholarship fund equal to the average revenue of public school students, which is twenty-six thousand, eight thousand dollars. And the fund allocated to students in an online fund, I was just so amazed at it. Provided with an online, a list we provided of providers, tutoring, books, online classes, even transportation. The other thing too, was the first two years that the bill was passed, first two years, um, it still had, has an income eligibility. Federal poverty level of two hundred percent. If it passes, um, they take it to four hundred percent. Which that would improve all the students. Wow, in South Carolina. And it does impact, that was definitely, it impacted school districts. Um, and then put a version bill between the House and Senate. And what Cityville was saying, that they think it would come to so-called stalemate about it. But eventually, it might, what, what if this thing out? Um, one of the other ones that really caught my attention also was, um, Set Bill one twenty-five. It's saying that it really need to pass. Because, um, and this bill came up during COVID. And it's currently now a tax exempt for developers to develop building in the house. That really, that really captured me. But the amount was never defined on how much of the development had to be dedicated to the income housing. But between, it's a post pump and Rock Hill and Charlotte discovered about a year ago that what they were doing was putting hundreds of units, and only one or two of the units in there was dedicated to the income. Now, that means that now they're getting a hundred percent tax exempt on who have two apartments alone. That was really best, that was really messy when I heard that. And. We put two apartments in there versus a hundred. And the thing of mine is, who, who does not benefit is it is, is the school district. Because that's where our money comes from. That's our operating money. And um, right now this bill is, is running kind of hard. And the Senate, and they were saying that we really need to make efforts with our legislators and tell them, hey. Code sponsors bill, make sure your name is done because we need support. Or as the um, the school district, we need to. It's our money. It's our money. Those, those are the kind of things that just really threw me for a bit there. I mean, um. The other thing was the school board, um also seeing insurance. Um having the ability to say, hey, we want this insurance and we don't want that insurance, you know, and. This bill has been, has been back and forth. In the House, and it said, well, he said that, that hmm, setting the mass. Um he was the one that kind of keep putting back in there, but um but I, I think that that's, that's ultimate that need to be done. Um. The other thing from S, SEC, he was saying that in their financial committee meetings. Um state meetings, they were saying that, oh, there's like older people in there, you're going to be sent, you know, anyway, so no, that's not. That's not go that out, but they did study, that's true. So at least it would just give us the ability to say yes or no to state insurance. So those are some of the things that, that was really, I was intrigued yesterday. And you know what they say, when you talk and I, I present the information to the school board members, but when you hear it. When you hear it coming from somewhere else, it's like, oh, it really kind of sets in. So you actually got to hear this, yeah, I don't know, we didn't even good, valid agree, but when you hear it. It's like, oh, this is real stuff going on here. So those are some of the things that I learned from, from yesterday. And that had my attention the whole day, the whole day. And see how it act um, one of the other things that happened, Michael Rivers, um. At the House, Representative Spock, he introduced me, um, Arthur. Now, that was, I saw some pretty amazing stuff there, and I just think that more should have, you know, and maybe it's just me. You know, it's my first time, but I just think that more should have, should have been in place of that, because it was, it was really good. It was most of that, I had to try and model that, I stopped talking.
Well, you can, you can write those down.
I did have to have more written down.
And then share them with, with, so that it's, it's captured out of this meeting. And then some people can get it.
I'll tell you one thing, you, you know some heck a lot better than mine. Uh when you were talking, I remember them saying those things.
Right.
But I don't have them in my notes.
But no, it would happen. If they had that bill where you could say, I accept the healthcare or I don't.
Right.
You know what I would say to them? Keep your healthcare, how much is that kind of, how much is that going to cost? Two thousand dollars? Give me the two thousand.
That's, that's what the study showed. That is, people take it on based upon.
Right.
The rates, you know, because a lot of human centers on, on Obamacare, when I looked it up, it was like, you know. Even a lot of centers.
And the voucher thing is.
Oh.
It give you six thousand dollars. And you can spend it on transportation, you can spend it on books, you can spend it on homeschooling. And so you're going to give you six thousand dollars. And you're going to put it in your pocket. And you say, well, they could go to uh. Buford Academy. Buford Academy tells us it's six thou, or twelve thousand dollars. So you're going to give me six thousand dollars, then I got to come with six thousand dollars right there. Or, let's see, I'm already sending my kid Buford Academy. And I made twelve thousand dollars, now you're going to give me six thousand? Thank you very much.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Right.
And that's what's happened across the country, is this is nothing more than a subsidy for rich people.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's. Three different states, you can find, you can find the data.
Yes.
It's exactly what's happening. And then these people up at Columbia, they guess it's fine. Yeah, okay, it's okay to do it. But you got school choice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. What do you think that it actually going? More chance of the passing it than not? I'll tell.
So, um, I don't. Yes, sir. No, that was basically my day where there was some time, um conversation that we had with Superintendent. And her, her idea of what's going on in the state, she, you know, even part of the fact that fifty-four, fifty-four percent of us. Third places in South, in South Carolina are not really on the. Left, you know, and that was a pet, that's a pet key for us. Reading, she really, she really slimmed down and said, hey, we need to get back to the essentials of reading. The science of reading, and when you go to the same page, she pushing that real hard.
Yeah, we, we've already initiated phonics. Hmm. And that's what they're saying is we're, we got away from. Response, sound out, sound out. The other, the other thing is that. She, she really doesn't get. The problems of uh, of the charter schools. And, but you see, there's, one of the laws is keeping charter schools accountable. But she still doesn't understand the testing issue. And the testing issue, the, but private schools versus public schools. And, and that's one thing that uh, and Frank Rodriguez has told her about it. But she, she not listening.
She, uh, that, that came up, you asked her, oh yeah, I do. So. She talked about some exams that they, that she went to. I understood directly, she went to a private school and she said, I'm going out of school, they took, and I didn't really know where. But they did take the exit exam, but I don't think it's dead.
No, it took the back and went up. Doctor Rodriguez said, we'd like to take that, let us take that exam, you know, take the state exam, said, you can save a lot of money in state. Because you, you spent a lot of money monitoring that, we'll just take the same exam at all the private school. But. I know about that.
Any more, sir?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Well, again, your, your notation, and he was writing furiously in every one of the little meetings that we had, so. You may end up being identified as the uh, uh legislative committee's no big. Alright, so then I can speak on the uh, school board superintendent, gives it to the uh, officer. We were treated wonderfully. Um, and you can share your thoughts, um, but from my perspective, I thought we were treated graciously. And um various members had given, including Colonel, the superintendent and others. A list of priorities that they wanted to have discussed. And so where my question is came from. So the first one is fiscal authority, um and she could, we, the superintendent, they could give us an opinion on that. Um, she, she feels it is a legislative delegation. So we didn't challenge anything that she said. We were just trying to find out what the position was, so that's, that's a starting point. Uh so that was one. Um, a response, and she gave a longer response, so I'm boiling it down here. Uh there were several bills mentioned in that had uh gotten attention in terms of the constitution. So we were, she was able to mention that um in a conversation. Here among, we were in front of a big mural and took a picture and she now walked aside. And she said that that one, uh in terms of passing. Uh might not have a lot of energy because it's too chaotic and as the Colonel said, it's even if it comes through. And uh they can change it in the legislature, but the condition of the states, it was not a problematic thing. The other thing that we, we asked, and uh this was establish parity in student testing by private charter and public school. We already knew that there's testing in private and public. And she spoke to that and said that, but the issue of the private schools. That's where that test came up with, right? Uh and so she said that the ultimately, it doesn't seem to be a lot of energy. To standardize, to be very synchronized testing across all three public offerings. But I think that is one of those topics that the. The uh extra challenge it does to public schools is something we can use. Because that's the message that we take everybody. And so there should be parity in saying, as you said, that let's take the hour test. Which is the one that she was referring to. The other uh, uh topic that was raised, uh was more affected discipline that always got around the cloth.
Yeah.
Um, because there were so many testimonials about how discipline disrupt the educational process. And it really lobs the kids who is there trying to do their best. They get distracted or they get intimidated and then they sort of withdraw. Uh and I mean, that one was almost madness.
Yeah.
From the comments and what people were saying, so you may, you may see something from there. We may have to push that though. I mean, as a district, we get it operated, but talking to two other districts, which the parent Colonel knows about. That, you know, could potentially align with us. Um, we raised about earth to five, right? Uh because so this data shows that two-parent homes to them, and you're not talking whatever the. Number of places you apply to your two parents. But two parents are better able to support a kid than one. And so the question posed to her was, the, the data, including from Finland and Scandinavia countries. Show that that is really key in what can be done. So that's another one, we even bought the T O. Alright. Um, another item that was referred to us was the state and health insurance, so we, we captured that. Um, oh, the high school league, that was something that came to us as well. Teachers agreeing, that was one, that was um already in the bill, so people were aware of that. So there was quite a, quite a bit there that was really very interesting. One, another one was credit for the experience in non-teaching positions. So that someone who has been working as a mathematician, how you get them in and give them credit. For their experience, and then you, you know, and some very quick modified program to certify them as having. Your kind of D O B term I haven't even before, to actually come in and teach them. So that was one that uh was raised. Okay, now another one was the um, she mentioned enable streaming model policy for schools. So that schools get more funding for being able to stream some of that class, classroom information. So that kids when they're home can still access and help them make supplement for whatever they need to. That one was one I had not heard before. Charter school accountability. Um, whereas charter can revoke, a charter school can uh, um pursue. Changing from one sponsor or authorizer to another. But they can terminate the co, the contract with a majority vote of their goal. Uh and to change authorizer will require the agreement, as I said. A, the current authorizer and the future authorizer. So they couldn't just sort of leave uh the umbrella. And the contract must be online, so that everybody can take a look at it. We talked about lifelong certification. There's a big discussion about um expulsion for one year for knowing that bringing a gun to school. There was an incident that occurred there, and so that sort of, and the kid was a kid, a student. And he brought a gun to school, um, it's someone that basically intimidated him. And so that's one of those, those issues that also came up. Okay, uh the other one, our own um representative, we thought was very instrumental in informing us. There's Bill Hospital thirty-six forty-five, which talks about the impact on school districts for giving five weeks of paid parental leave. So that would be an additional burden financially that you would have to cover. And so he wanted us to be aware of that. Um, so those were a lot of the things that took place. Um, anything else come to mind, Pastor, from you, the school superintendent?
Yeah.
Any guidance from anyone? Pastor Boyd, Ms. Boyd, Colonel?
Okay, you could ask a question.
Yeah.
Seth Cooper.
Mm-hmm.
And S P R E L P.
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean?
That he works for Harvard University, he's got, responded to, I met him in Atlanta. And he is a researcher, uh he's a Yale graduate, worked for McKinsey in educational research, you know, through performance. And so he was there at the national school board, and he approached and asked if he could share, if you share a uh survey. That they developed, and they're trying to make sure they, they base it and validate. And so we spent like thirty, forty-five minutes there. And so what he's doing is going around where the congregations of educators. Sharing the survey, and then they want to empirically validate it, and that they are done that once. And they had to ask the people for feedback. So for me, it was a uh typical data heavy, um with very strong. Um statistical structures put in place.
Right.
Where if you change one word in a, in a survey, you wouldn't think it would matter, but it can get a different result. And so they were very strong in it. But the thing that I suggested was make it more intuitively accessible. So, you know, give people an uh ability to look at it and just say, oh yeah, I understand it. And here's my response to that. It was simplified, was one thing. Um, so that, that was what he was doing. So when you saw me respond. He's looking, he, he mentioned he was going around the whole nation. And I figured it would be good if he would, you know, allow some time to come to use it. And then if you and the board and superintendent, all of a sudden, we now become one of the participants and formulate and find to that survey.
You, you know. That's part of the whole strategy of the legislative committee.
Mm-hmm.
Is to not only look at our local legislators. But to go out to uh universities that are doing these kinds of studies. To attract them to come to us because when they come, they bring benefits.
Yeah, it is.
It's, you know, we would give them something, we could fill out a survey or something, if they can come in with a grant.
Yeah.
They can come in with, let's try a pilot.
Yep.
And, you know, I am, I, I believe.
Right.
Any pilot is not a bad thing to have, but in here.
Right.
We, I'm sure, you know, we could find a school, it would be, just love to do that. And it's bringing in other people's money, I like to say other people's money.
Always.
And so, you know, I, I just want to. Say, there is the value, and I, I underestimate those out of you. Of going to all these different conferences. Because frankly, I spent a lot of time going to conferences and I didn't get a whole lot out of it, and I thought, yeah, I wasted time. And so it's good that I didn't go because I probably wouldn't have got anything out of it. But you guys got a lot out of it. And you sowed some seeds out there that can grow. And so that, that's changed my view of it a lot. And we just need to have more folks go and do that. And different venues, more than just political stuff. But also these different wizards that have ideas and money. And as soon as you start talking about Harvard, I think money.
Lots of it, lots of it.
So I, you know, I just, I think that you should uh mention that in your legislative report. So that the board knows and the public knows that, you know, in some ways. Buford County School District is reaching out nationally as well as reaching out to the state. Uh folks, that there's, there's other opportunities out there if they know about it, you know. And frankly, every time we bring somebody from outside into Buford County, they're blown away.
Mm-hmm.
By some of the things that we're doing.
Right.
And, and we're not getting credit for it. And we're not getting any money from other people uh to do more.
That's true.
So, you know, that, you know, I, I saw that report, that there, there is. The second and third order effects of the investment of sending folks out to these different conferences. And we, we never spent the money, I mean, we budgeted money, but we never, we never really spent all of that money. And, and we have, we have money in other funds if we could, if we had more people that interested in it.
Right.
So.
Well, we kind of typically own budget, we own budget for like maybe three or four, so we can keep it down, but.
Yes.
You can let me, like you said, we can move money around, get other people involved in the whole.
Yeah, I, I, and I look at the financial report. We are, we are, I think seventy, seventy-five percent, I've spent, I've only got two months left to go. So, you know, there's money, there's opportunities that we're not taking advantage of. And so I, I kind of like, I would love to see our budget, we spend every, every dime. Not on, not on snacks, but, but on people being out there and spreading the work. You know, it's kind of like being a, you know, a, a, a procrastinating and getting out. Talking to the masses and bringing them in, like, you know. That's right, if you're out.
Yes. You may, you may have a new conversion to you. Um, we totally, totally agree with you. One of the things that um, you know, probably we should try to do is. Is uh ask for recaps. When we do that. Uh so that, that's all, knowing that, you know, like people giving ideas, they will go there, ask about this. That sort of triggered, man, I need to make sure I capture that and then report back with it.
Also for board members to know, um, whatever, because I don't know what people said you all, and as you said, the. Different things that come up, if more of them, we need to make the announcement to board members. Like at the last session, if there's something that does come up that's interest you, then submit it. That's, you know, beyond the, what, South Carolina.
Right, so, right, right. And that could be, that could be local too, that could be a service club that said, you know, I'd like to do something.
Right.
Okay, what would you like to do? Uh, sounds good. Let me, let me find out a school that would, would like to sign up for that.
Were you started this?
Well, but, but you know, it's.
I mean, it's.
It's, it's there, it's there. We, we should add a user there. There is so much resources in this county that we're not using. And, and, and that's, we have a very loving, giving community, but you got to tell them what to love and what to give.
Okay, well, we have exhausted the list, and I appreciate everybody's inputs and guests and comments, um. So the next meeting is on. So the next meeting is on May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, at one P M. And are there any topics that you, any of the people here today would like to see? So. Some of the things that we've done, such as the legislative priority, you know, you know, by that time, we were.
You know, May thirteenth is the South Coast Cyber Summit.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, we'll, we'll take a look at, um, what Dave, do you think we might be able to do with? We'll take a look, Colonel, we'll circulate it and see what the abilities or.
I just thought you might, you know, send that.
Yeah, I heard myself, I heard myself. Okay. All right, so this, right, um. It's not?
It should be the fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Yeah. Okay, um, the thirteenth should be operations. Uh, well, the fifteenth, no, the fifteenth would be finance, that's the second Thursday, fifth business. Long when we would have met on Wednesday, so we're doing the fourteenth.
Okay, so.
Because the thirteenth should be operations, the fourteenth would be legislative, fifteenth would be finance.
Yeah, so we're looking at, um.
May fourteenth at one o'clock should be the next, uh, legislative.
Okay, so the, this is, um, an hour and a half before we target for the Wednesday for the meetings. So I'll check with, uh, Colonel, um, Parker. Colonel Gunnar? Yeah. And see, exactly, so I've done it before, I've set out, this was like a two day event.
Okay.
And and I, but I don't want to miss anything he says is critical. So we'll, we'll leave, we'll change it to the fourteenth, you say?
Yeah, it should, um, because we're generally set to meet on the second Wednesday.
Correct.
Um, so that would be May fourteenth at one o'clock.
Okay, sounds good, so we'll target that, and I'll reach out to Colonel Parker. And, um, anything else? Okay, well, thank you all, it's been, it's been a great discussion and appreciate the feedback and guidance. And, uh, again, we want to make sure we are not surprised that we can get in early on comments and what have you. All right, so is there an agreement to adjourn by, by unanimous consent? Please. Okay, Ms. Boyd?
I agree.
Thank you, ma'am. And we will, we will help get that binder to you, Ms. Boyd.
Oh, I, I'll get it, Mr. Rob, I'll, I'll get it, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
All right. I'm ready enough, thank you.